Okay, Mr. Hellyard's here. We're still two minutes early, but I think we'll be okay. Mr. Hellyard, do you mind coming a little earlier?
No, I don't.
Okay, come on up. Okay. One thing that we have here is the Munis protocols.
That's correct.
And then the other, I believe, is the other...
Is a complaint.
Yeah, would that be an executive session, that complaint, since it's against another employee in the town?
I believe that it would be.
Okay, all right, so we'll handle the Munis first?
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll do the others?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had a little, I've been having a little problem with the Munis system.
Okay.
What's been happening is my permits have been being, have been blocked.
Okay.
And I have sat with up to $20,000 in checks that I could not enter or receive because of the Munis system. And I felt, I feel that it's not, it's not authorized. I contacted the, the state's building inspector that I actually somewhat on that end report to.
Okay, and what's his name?
His name is Harold Lemming, L-E-M-I-N-G.
Okay.
And, and this was with Mr. Gorman.
Okay.
And he explained to me, and Attorney Donahue can probably speak on this too, if you'd like to come up.
I gotta hear what the facts are.
Okay, here's the facts. There are only three items that can stop me from issuing a building permit. And I'm gonna use a new house. Number one is it has to have water and sewer available.
Okay.
Number two, it has to meet zoning, which is my responsibility. And number three, the only person that can stop this process within the town is the town clerk for lack of paying, for lack of payment of taxes, fees, whatever. And there's nobody else that can actually have any authority over the issuance of a building permit. That includes a checklist. Checklists are not allowed, according to the state, because I ultimately have all the responsibilities. And I learned something in the Navy, is you can delegate your authority, but you can never delegate your responsibilities. And it seems as though that I'm being forced through the Munis system to delegate my responsibility.
I'm listening.
Okay. Now, like I said, according to the state, there's only three things that could stop, that stops a building permit. Now, if I fail to issue a building permit because somebody in this town says it doesn't meet zoning, then, or, the zoning's in particular, then I can be taken to the Board of Building Regulations and Standards, where I will probably, for the first offense, have my license suspended. That's a serious offense. Because I'm in violation of mass general law by allowing somebody else to deny a permit, when I'm the only one that could deny a permit. That's a serious offense.
Okay, which mass general law are you referring to?
What's that?
You refer to mass general law, is there...
Mass General Law 143, Section 3A states that I'm the chief administrator of the building, building permits. Chapter 40A, I believe it's Section 8, that gives me the authority for the zoning. Mr. Donahue concurs with that, thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So, by me allowing somebody else to have signatory authority on denying or accepting a permit, throws me in violation of mass general law. Will throw me if I accept that.
Okay. Is there something else you wanted to say?
Hmm?
Is there something you want to add to that?
Yeah.
Okay, I will go to selectmen, Gorman first, and then to selectmen Federici, and then I will add my...
Please.
What I did as a selectman and liaison for the building department, we called down the state guy, not once, but twice. He gave us the first time a ruling, and Mr. Carabetta down there, and the electrical inspector, Dan Hellyard, and myself. And he gave us a directive on what we have to do. And he was gonna give us 30 days to adhere to it.
Okay, did he give a directive to the building inspector?
Everybody there, everybody there, on what had to be done.
Then we should have, okay, go ahead.
Let me just finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, what happened in 30 days, it didn't get better, it got worse. So, the, the pact came down again, and I invited the chairman of the planning board to be down there, which Mr. Carabetta's the chairman, but he was out sick. So, Mr. Meck, I called, and he said he'd be there at 1:00. And we also, well, the building inspector started explaining what was going on, what we have to do, before he went to his superiors. And he said some heads were gonna roll if we don't adhere to what he's telling. So, what happened, in the interim, he said things have to be off that computer. So, I go, well, wait a minute, I can get the IT director down here, because he's just up at the school. So, we waited and had the IT director, Ryan Quimby, come down. And he had Mary taking the notes, his assistant, I guess is. And so, what happened is, he directed us what he wanted off the computer, what we're supposed to do, and if we don't adhere to this, he possibly could sue the town of East La Meadow, and he would be seeing the Attorney General, which is keeping an eye on what East La Meadow is doing with this. So, my directive to Mr. Quimby was, I don't want you procrastinating on this, I want this taken care of right away. So, maybe it was a good thing, 'cause we got everybody here at a meeting, which is the first time we've been crowded like this, and maybe it'll bring this situation to a head. Because what I think is happening in the, in the planning board, the tail is wagging a dog instead of dog wagging a tail, and we got problems, which I'm trying to address them in a nice way with all the bologna that's going on, but there seems to be animosity between the two departments, which is making it tough for me to try to get the thing squared away. And that's where we stand.
All right, the question, I don't wanna pull you off, but I will come to you.
I have no questions anyways.
Okay. What were the directives that were given to you? And what were the violations that could get us into? Because I think we, as an entire board, need to know that, and there needs to be an understanding of that, because in our policy, one board member cannot do something that goes, swipes right across. And I'm just...
I just, I just wanna say one thing.
Yes.
The first time I saw that was in a letter in my package today.
Oh, wow.
Because the selectmen before me made this ruling. The last selectmen is that we're here.
Yeah, they made that policy to, to, to kinda empower our department heads so that they could not do something that would be adverse. And this, this is, I guess we've spent like over $80,000 on the Munis, so that, that brought a lot of question as to why are we throwing out the window? And we just need, all need an opportunity to understand what's going on, and so that we can attack this together.
But I gotta say, the Munis system is a good thing, if it's implemented the way it should be.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm gonna tell you straight out, because all these people I hear, and not one of them come to me, other than Bob Parrott. And I met with him this morning, and if other people had come and met with us like he did, we gotta understand what's going on, and it was a productive meeting this morning.
Okay.
So, you know, because I'm trying to get this thing settled, these departments should be working together. I read all the stuff that they sent on the paper. If they did everything that they put on this paper, this thing, we wouldn't even be sitting here tonight, be running smooth, but that's not what's happening.
Okay, let me go back to, what were the directives? What was the problem that the state people found with the way that we're having our Munis operate? Because the way I see it, it, it looks like it's, it's a check and balance type of thing. And right now, I'm hearing for the first time that it's not working. I don't remember you ever coming to us and telling us that it wasn't working. So, what did the person from the state say? What were the issues?
First of all, the Munis system is not a checks and balance.
It may be for other departments, but it's not a checks and balance. When somebody has the authority, nobody else can interfere with that authority. And what's happening now is there are people out there that are, that are abusing their authority. And what it is, is that, first of all, Attorney Donahue has already agreed with me on this, is that the, the, the person in charge of zoning is the building commissioner. And the person in charge of issuing building permits is the building commissioner. Now, we had, like Mr. Gorman had stated, we had a very good conversation with Mr. Parrott of the DPW. And we came up with a solution for that.
For what, see, I still don't even know what that is.
Solution for easements. Now, that was something that was brought up. Easements are on deeds. Strictly on deeds. I am not responsible for enforcing deeds, nor is the DPW. They can identify that there could be a problem there. But what I informed Mr. Parrott of is that I will put on my permit that if you have a require, a deed that states that you have an easement on it, you are to contact the Department of Public Works. I'm gonna take it one step further, I talked to Bob. And I said, here's what I'll do. When I turn in, we mail them back the receipt, I will have a form letter in there. So, they will know.
But once, just, I just have to ask, I'm sorry. Once you sign off on the permit, isn't the cow kinda out of the barn at that point?
Of course she is.
So, what would be the problem with being proactive to just checking with Bob prior to you signing that?
Because I can't do that, because I'm required to issue a building permit within 30 days of the application.
And has that been a problem?
Well... You may be correct, yeah. But I'm required to issue a building permit, as long as they meet the requirements of the 780 CMR and of the zoning and water and sewer.
So, if it was 30 days, wouldn't that be time enough for, to go through the department flow line to get stuff to...
They don't have any approval on it. I'm not, I'm not giving up my approval, because...
Okay, I don't, I, okay. I will, I will, for this time, yep, go ahead.
You know, if, if I have that sit back and wait on it, you have to realize that we take a roofing permit, and this person can't afford their roofing. But they got a whole bunch of volunteers that's gonna help out. Now, because of whatever reason, somebody in some other department says, you can't issue that permit.
Okay.
And these people lose the ability to have these people come over and help them, because that's the only reason, the only weekend that they can help them. You know, guess what? We got somebody out there with holes in their roofs, and nobody accountable. You know who's accountable for all that? I am. I'm accountable for every single permit that's issued, building permits issued. I'm accountable for every zoning that's part of a permit that's issued. There's nobody else that has that authority, other than myself. But people believe that they should have that authority. I'm not giving up that authority.
I, I don't believe that's, I know I'm not asking you to give up that authority, but I'm asking that you take in, perhaps take in some consideration of having more than one set of eyes on the process.
No, that's, that's not, that's not how the state said it to me.
Okay, then perhaps we should have, then maybe we should have the state in, and, because I still haven't heard what the violation was. And I've asked it two different sorts of ways, and I haven't heard what the problem was that brought the state in. And I'm not saying that there wasn't one, but I just don't know what it is.
What it was, was the planning department has been blocking my permits, which I, I mentioned earlier to you. They have been blocking my permits. Blocking my permits because a building has a special permit on it when a guy wants to come in and put a receptacle in. Special, a special permit on a building, because a restaurant has this, this special permit. Do you think it's good practice to, to punish all the other businesses that do not even relate to this business? Is that good practice?
I don't know if they're all the same, though, Mr. Hellyard. I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand exactly, follow you on this.
Well, okay.
From what...
You have a business.
From what I'm understanding, that what Munis did, from some of the, what the system did is it allowed each department to have a look at it and to put notes on it, and it would go to you...
Doesn't happen that way. I wish it did. That would work out perfectly. But that's not how it is. It's because other departments want full authority over something that falls under my jurisdiction.
Okay.
That's what brought the state inspector down here, because he saw some of them, and it really disturbed them. And so, then...
Can you give me an example, like, Billy? I'm just trying to, an example, because you, there's been conversations that I'm not privy to, and so, I really wanna understand. And I think if there are some boards here who are willing to, to speak on it, you know, 'cause maybe we can come, or maybe we just have a, another meeting where, like you said, with Bob Parrott, it was productive.
And I'd like to bring the state guy down.
I think that would be perfect. But I, I will say that I put a stay on the, whatever was to change, through, I did. Because something of that nature has to be approved by this entire board. And one person can't do it, and there really should be some conversations that take place prior to that. I'm not saying that it might not end up that way, but certainly we need to have those conversations. If you're having an issue, like you said, with Mr. Parrott, that worked out wonderful, the conversation. Do you think you couldn't have the same conversation with some of the other boards?
So, Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
You are telling me that, that until you get a vote, that I am required to violate mass general law and the building, the 780 CMR? Is that correct?
No, that's a misstatement of fact.
Okay.
Attorney Donahue.
Well, first of all, I think your question needs to be answered. Specifically, what it is that the state said was the issue with the procedure that was in place. Secondly, two years ago, or better, there was a meeting of yourself and every one of the department heads and some of the elected members of the board talking about the issues that existed with Munis, the same issues about being blocked and permits not being issued. And there was a procedure put in place at that point in time. It would seem to me, in the sense of boards working together, if that system was broken down, and you found that it was not working appropriately, that you would've come back to the board and said, I have a problem, we need to readdress it. But this way, this is, this coming in, in...
Excuse me, Ms. Gorman.
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
Excuse me.
Wait, wait, wait.
He did come back to the board, I'm the liaison for him. He came back to me several times.
Well, as a liaison, you could share that with us, though, Bill.
Let me just finish, Andrea.
But you didn't let Attorney Donahue...
Well, I wanna answer what we did. And I brought the state, the state guy came down here to explain to us what was happening. And here we are tonight, 'cause we brought it to a head.
Look, all I'm saying is, government only works when the departments work together.
You're exactly right.
And when there's an issue of something not working, the board, your board, you, the chairman, and the secretary can't address it if the department head doesn't bring it to the board, or the liaison bring it to the board and say, we have a problem that needs to get addressed. That's the issue that's going on here. Now, the state can come in and say all they wanna say, but in the first instance, the determination of how municipal government should operate at the local level is a determination that the local boards should make through their elected officials and through the people who are in authority. Now, I don't dispute, if there are problems that need to be corrected, correct them. But this situation to come in and say that the law is being violated, I don't believe the law is being violated. There may be procedures that could work better, and could be streamlined, but that's also part of the responsibility of the department heads to come in and say, the system's not working, we need to fix it, here's what I suggest. Or, I don't know how to fix it, let's sit down and talk about how to fix it and get it resolved. Three years ago, this was put to bed three and a half years ago, and as far as I know, the system has worked fairly well since that time. The fact that these issues are coming up now is a whole new problem that's, that I've never heard from any of the department heads that was existing. Because I would've tried to work with the department heads to address it.
But that's what I'm doing, Mr. Donahue. There's no, there's no reason to appoint me as a liaison for any department, let me finish. For any department, if you can't work with, with the person involved, and if I can't handle it, then we, we come to the board. And we agreed to that at one meeting right in that executive room.
But a liaison is just that.
Absolutely, but what I'm saying is, that a liaison brings the problems that exist in the department, unless it's an immediate thing that has to be fixed immediately, back to the board to say, look, here's the problem, and let me explain to you what it is, this is what I think the solution is, what do you think? And then the board determines what to do. I agree with you. I'm just saying that the unilateral decision where it affects a number of other elected boards and employees requires the board of selectmen to come in as a group, either by majority vote or unanimous vote, and say, look, these are the changes we're gonna put in place here. But I log you for, for coming forward and bringing it forward as a liaison. I think that, that's a well-practiced and a smart thing to do, especially as a new selectman, to understand that the problem needs to be fixed. I think you should be logged in.
You know, Mr. Donahue, I tried to get the thing settled here. With, with the state guy, we tried to keep it in-house. But the guy no sooner went back to Boston, and we had a problem right after that, the next day. He gave us 30 days, it was something we have to settle right away. Because I didn't want the guy going to his boss and the Attorney General and, and turn around suing the town of East La Meadow, because we were doing something we weren't supposed to do.
But, Mr. Gorman, the first thing, the first thing that the Attorney General would've done, if the board of building, forgot the name, whatever, the regulations people had an issue, they would've assigned it to an assistant Attorney General, and they would've called town council and said, hey, what's the problem? They've got an issue. What are we gonna do to get this fixed? And then we would've worked to address the concerns that the state had so that it worked here for the, for the town in an amiable fashion to make the system work for the benefit of all the residents, which is exactly what you're trying to do. But the fear that the state is gonna come in and file suit, they may do that at some point in the future for some big issue, but they're gonna do their best to avoid that by working with local boards and authorities to try to correct those problems if they can.
And that's what I've been trying to do. I've been trying to stop them from doing anything. But I have a question for you, Attorney Donahue.
Yes, sir.
I asked a question earlier. Who has approval of zoning?
Approval of zoning?
Yes.
Down meeting?
No, I'm, I'm speaking of on my level. My level. Who is a zoning enforcement officer, and who makes the determination whether or not it meets, something meets zoning?
That's the building commissioner's responsibility.
It's my responsibility. But then you're saying that I, I don't have the responsibility.
But, what I'm saying is, the process that was in place before, that three or four years ago, when Munis was, was having that issue, was that there were other impacts on other departments and boards related to new construction or other issues. And those boards were looking to have a checkoff. Now, the responsibility, as I recall it, was that they were supposed to respond within a week or 10 days from the time that they received notice that there was an application for a building permit filed. And if they didn't, then you were free to issue the permit. But there was a notification to them with a short window for them to respond. And it didn't violate state law, because it was well within 30-day period, even though it could be longer than that, for when a permit has to be issued. The other thing with respect to a property owner coming in and saying, I need my permit, give me the permit so I can get it done, so I don't lose my workers. Again, the town tries to work with residents to, to have them address their needs in a cost-effective manner as much as possible. But it's responsibility on the property owners, too. If they know they're gonna have 10 people help them put a roof on, they don't wait till Thursday to come in and say, I need a permit for Friday so I can put it on Saturday. They come in a week or two in advance, in case there's a problem, to say, I want a permit to put the roof on in two weeks, something like that. So, there's a balance, a check and balance to make the system work.
Am I correct to say that...
You're always correct, Mr. Gorman.
Yeah, that the, the planning board has the authority to block any issuance of my building permits?
No.
No.
And that's not the process that was ever in place, though, in the last three years.
But you know, Attorney Donahue, you mentioned this in the past, in that, three years ago, that the planning department has no authority over zoning, and it belongs to the building commissioner. Yeah, well, that's not working.
Well, I'm not saying it's working or it's not working. I'm saying that if it's not working, there are a lot of intelligent people right here in this room, myself excluded, who could come up with a resolution to an issue if they knew or know that the issue exists. And to come in and say, we've got this huge problem that has to be corrected, okay. But the people here can do it if they know what the problems are specifically. I can pick a specific issue and say, this is a problem, this has gotta be fixed. But it's one sliver in an entire board.
Right, correct.
And the rest of the board is fine, once you smooth out that sliver. So, my suggestion is that you identify the specific problems in writing for the board, for, for your liaison at least, to get to the board, as to what needs to be done to address the problems with the Munis system as it currently operates. And then see if we can put in place a system that works for all of those problems that's satisfactory to the state inspectors who have a problem with it. And if not, then we have to determine what to do going forward.
Then, then I am correct in saying that, that because the, the planning board, or any other board that doesn't have the authority, as far as, say, easements, you know as well as I do, easements are on deeds. That's enforced by who knows who. Okay, now, what you have stated is that, no, the planning board, or I have complete jurisdiction over zoning?
I, I didn't say that.
Okay, you didn't say that.
I'm saying you were the zoning enforcement officer, the interpreter of the zoning bible.
Correctly, and I'm the one who approves the zoning as far as it goes for a building permit. Right, am I correct?
Let me point out to you the issue with the easements that you're talking about. You're right. Easements don't mean a hill of beans and the issuance of a Munis... You're right. Easements don't mean a hill of beans and the issuance of a municipal building permit.
No, it doesn't.
There are private restrictions on property that don't have any effect. But if you're asked to issue a building permit and one of the other departments happens to know that there's an easement, that if this guy builds, he's going to end up with an issue where he may be forced by some budding owner to rip out his foundation and cost him $20,000, isn't it better for the community for that owner to be advised that that problem exists and let him roll the dice knowing that it's a problem?
Didn't I mention that earlier? Did I mention that earlier?
No.
I did too. I correct, I, I told you, I told everyone here that we have met with Bob Parrott and came up with a solution for easements.
Okay, he did say that. He did say that about the easement.
He did say that.
But, but it wasn't in the context that he was talking about, though. So, I guess where we are.
That's correct.
Is, is that the current system is, is going to remain for now. We're waiting to hear from either you or the liaison to the board what the issues are. We will work them out with the other boards and we will move forward. We don't want to delay you, however, for the benefit of our taxpayers and the people that are doing business in our town. We need to do this correctly.
I'm not trying to stop that.
Nope.
That's the last thing I want to do.
Okay.
I, I, my department.
And so we're in agreement then.
We pride ourselves on being customer orientated.
Okay.
We, we do. But the fact of the matter is, is that I'm being told that I have to allow the planning board to sign off on all, have a signatory authority on building permits, which Attorney Donahue said, "I'm responsible for that."
But that's not, but that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Donahue, but that's not the policy that was established years ago.
What is the law?
No, but there was a policy that you adopted here that nobody signed off but you. It was just a matter that the, the departments, planning and DPW, the engineer and DPW, were given the authority, not the authority, but given notice of an application for new construction.
That's correct.
And then were given a period of time, I think it was 10 days, maybe it was longer, maybe it was shorter.
No, it was two days.
To respond. And if they didn't respond, then any block on you issuing a permit was supposed to be removed. That was the policy, I recall it was adopted.
So, I have to get planning board approval before I can issue a building permit for zoning?
That's not exactly, that's not what I said at all. All I said is you had to notify them.
Yes.
And give them the time that you, that you agreed to.
Exactly. Yes, exactly. But the solution that we came up with, Mr. Parrott, was, was the best solution. They will get notified. They have no sign off on it. They will get notified. And that, you know, if they have any questions, they can do like the town clerk does. They notify me.
If you want to change the policy, I'm fine with that.
That's fine.
You're saying this was a policy that all of the boards participate, all of the department heads and representatives of the boards participate, you were there.
But a policy change has to go through the board as well.
I was there alone. Give me a break.
At this time.
I was there alone.
So, looking for, there is somebody who would like to address.
Yeah.
And then I know that Mr. Carabatta had his hand up also.
Christine Sonnier, Chairman of the Board of Assessors.
Yes.
I have some very real concerns about the lack of the notification system to our office because Chapter 143 that Mr. Hellier referred to earlier, Section 61 stipulates that the assessors will get notice of the permits within seven days. And if you take away the Munis system, that, that notification, which we then do a checks and balance with the permits we receive from the office, and sometimes, you know, a few of them fall through the cracks, so we go and look for them. But if we don't receive the permits, can the town afford to go without $1.5 million in new taxable value? Can you afford to go without $400,000 or $450,000 in new growth revenue? And what about our, our own inspection system? There's a whole ripple effect to this. It doesn't just affect the planning board or the DPW. It affects the assessors. So, and we're an autonomous board. We have nothing to do with this policy. But I was in the meeting with Selectman Federici that was referred to a few years ago with Chairman, with Council, Town Council, Mr. Donahue, and we thought we had resolved the issues. Nobody at that meeting wanted to take the authority away from the building inspector. We fully realize that it's his authority to issue a permit. All we ask is that due diligence be done, the zoning bylaws checked, and whatever the tax collectors and whatever else would impede a permit. That's the only thing that we asked at that meeting and that we can promptly notify. That's all I have to say.
Can I, I'll answer that for you.
Yeah.
The intention is not to take you out of there. In fact, you weren't even brought into the equation because you get notified.
Yes, we do.
And, and I, I'm not taking that notification with. You don't have any signatory authority within this permit.
We got a memo that we were excluded from.
Well, then, what, did I send that, did I send that memo out?
We should request. That was at the request of you and Selectman Gorman.
Did I send that, that out? There's some confusion within that.
Came from your bosses.
There's some confusion within that.
Yeah.
Because that, as discussed, was not.
Okay.
It was never the intention of this whatsoever.
Okay.
The intention is to make sure everybody gets notified. That's necessary. The signatory authority is the question.
We've never had that.
You don't, you don't. You get, I don't even know you get notified.
As long, as long as I know that we'll still get notices and we'll get the building permits, I'm satisfied.
There was no intention to ever take you out of the loop as far as getting notified. Just the same thing as, as, as Mr. Florence here.
Yeah.
He gets notified.
Well, that's just it. I think there's been a lot of miscommunication about this and I think we also.
Not from my side.
Okay. It's, it sounds like there, there are some misunderstandings here.
Oh, yeah.
Which is why we do need to go back to step one and do it correctly. Mr. Gorman, Selectman Gorman, if you can forward what quote unquote the violations were, we'll work with the board, the, the heads, and, and we'll move forward with this.
I'll do better than that.
Sure.
I'm going to call the state guy down here. I want the board there.
Yep.
I want Mr. Donahue there. I want Mr. Hellier there.
Okay.
That way, there's no miscommunication on what we said and what we didn't say.
I think that would, exactly.
Because there were people that took notes. I should have had the notes down there on what was said, but apparently they took down the wrong notes.
One more person and then, because we're going back to step one here. Just real quick, identify yourself, please.
Ryan Pumbi, IT Director. I was in that meeting. That meeting was audio recorded. In that meeting, Inspector Hellier did say to remove all notifications except for the town clerk because of the tax.
That was probably an error on my part.
Okay.
But the fact of the matter is not my intention whatsoever.
Okay, so, all right, so that wasn't your intention. So, we're going to start at ground one. The, I'll look forward to hearing from you, Selectman Gorman.
If I may add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to say, if you're going to have a meeting with Dan and Selectman Gorman and Attorney Donahue and the state gentleman, we may want to have the department heads involved also.
I think that, well, we're all going to be there, yeah.
Because that's what we, we didn't have the state guy, but was it three years ago or whenever it was, we did hammer out, it took a while, you know, Attorney Donahue did wear a striped shirt and a whistle, but we did, we did hammer out, you know, some, some guidelines, and I think we can do the same thing. But the important thing is to get all the players in the room.
Exactly.
So, when you walk out of that room, there's no question what's going on.
Everybody has the same understanding.
Instead of getting it secondhand, thirdhand, you know? I mean, it just makes sense.
And the thing about it is, if it, if we're, all three of us are there, it's an open meeting. Okay, we're good?
We get one more?
I think I have to go on to Paul Clay.
No, we have two more.
Two more?
We have seven more.
Okay. Mr. Carabatta first and then to Mr. Mayberry, because Mr. Carabatta had his hand up earlier.
My name is Michael Carabatta. I represent the planning board and the chairperson. I was at that meeting with Dan Hellier, Mr. Gorman, and the state inspector. They were telling me that our director was holding up permits. When I asked for the examples, they provided me with two, for the public library and one was for private residents. Both of those were under special permit. All right, that being said, I'm going to review, I'm going to review something from our bylaws. Under 7.10, building inspector duties, the building inspector shall enforce provisions of this bylaw and amendments as herein and after provided. No building shall be constructed, altered, moved, or changed in use in town without a permit from the building inspector. Such permits shall be withheld unless such construction, alteration, or proposed use is in conformity with all provisions of this bylaw.
Oh, yes.
Where a special permit is required pursuant to the provisions of this bylaw or where appeal or petition involving a variance is pending, the building inspector shall issue no such permit except in accordance with written decision of appropriate board or boards, that being the planning board, i.e., or the board of appeals. Furthermore, in our bylaws, Section 7.2, under special permits, special permits are requested for certain uses, structures, or conditions as specified in Section 3 Schedule of Use Regulations. 7.21, purpose, special permits are intended, intended to provide detailed review of certain uses and structures which may have substantial impact on traffic, utility systems, and the character of the town, among other things. The special permit review process is intended to ensure a harmonious relationship between proposed development and its surroundings, to ensure the proposals are consistent with the purpose and intent of this bylaw, which is this book. 7.22, special permit granting authority, this planning board shall be the special permit granting authority. End of sentence.
Okay.
This is the book that we use as a planning board. This is the book that we use to institute the town's bylaws. It was instituted in 1962. So, I ask you, who is superseding their authority?
Okay, I heard your question. I am going to go straight to Mr. Mayberry and then I'll let you do a rebuttal and then we're going to call this done. Yes, sir.
John Mayberry, I'm on the Board of Public Works. I just wanted to maybe just change it a little bit to a, a different kind of thought process for just a minute, and that would be, we're running a $52,357 million corporation here. Most corporations of this size have departments that work together. So, I think, I heard it a little bit, but I think people really need to take it home and think about it. We cannot allow one individual of a $55,700, million corporation to just say, "We don't need departments. We don't need collaboration." I'll shift to the DPW specifically. We have the authority for good, safe drinking water. We have the authority to get rid of the waste from a home. We have the authority for parking and traffic and other things that we're responsible on the public way. So, there are some things that we need to be notified about so that we can stay within the law and more, more importantly, we can take care of public safety. So, I just wanted to change it up a little bit and not necessarily all about case law. It's about a community of $57 million operating like an effective organization where departments work together and communicate effectively.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carabatta.
Yes.
You stated in, you read the zoning bylaws.
I did.
It says in the beginning of it, was it 7.10?
Yes.
It says that, what does it say again?
Says the building inspector shall enforce the provisions of the bylaw and amendments as herein, herein and after provided. No building shall be constructed, altered, moved, or changed in use in town without a permit from the building inspector.
Okay, stop right there. That's fine. That says that I can't issue a building permit if it doesn't meet zoning, correct? It has to be zoning. And one of the requirements is, is that if someone comes in for a permit that I feel requires a separate, a special permit, and believe me, I consulted with you because you went to these seminars with me on numerous occasions, okay? Now, if it doesn't meet the requirements for a special permit, what is my obligation?
Issue the permit?
No, it's not. I can't because it doesn't meet zoning. It has to meet zoning. That's a requirement according to the 780 CMR, that it has to meet zoning. Now, if, if a property or a structure to be added or a house to be built doesn't meet that requirement, then they need a special permit or possibly a variance. Where does it go from there? I send it out of there because I'm washing my hands with it. I'm saying that this property needs a special permit. It's up to the special permit grant authority to either say, "Nope, you're, you're good" or "You need a special permit."
And if we're taken out of the system, how do we answer those questions?
Who said you take it out of the system?
That's the right question.
All right. You know what? All right. All right. This is considered done. We will set up an appointment. I guess we'll go by the state and see if they can issue a couple of dates, and we'll get that out to the department heads ASAP, and we'll be in a holding pattern until then. Mr. Hellier? Thank you. We do have other business with you.
Yes, you do.
An executive session. We just have a few more things to get through.
Okay, you don't have to shake my hand. I'll see you at the executives.
That's all right. Thank you for the cooperative spirit.
Or a smaller table. Good night, everyone.
I'll entertain a two-minute recess. Is there a second? All, any conversation?
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I will say this right now. With regards to Mr. Hellier, we have to give 48 hours' notice to the other gentleman. So, so, so we'll have to forward this to our next meeting and we'll make sure that that piece happens, and we certainly will hear what you have to say at that time.
Yeah, I'm totally aware of it. I'm just asking.
Okay, all right. And then, just so that, you know, our listening audience is aware that we're not putting anything under the carpet, also with regards to the Recreation Department position, that will be placed, tabled until we hear a, an opinion from our council. And that's, that's that we do that.
If I may ask?
You may ask.
Is that the appointment or the starting time?
The starting time.
Okay. Your starting date, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so now, moving down to Town Council.
Tried to get you out of here early.
Okay. Which ones do you think are going to be for executive?
Of the ones I have knowledge, it would be, I believe, 26 is contract negotiations, non-union.
27, I would think.
27, I guess if it's, could be, it's an update. I don't have anything in my packet about that.
Yeah, it's an arbitration.
Okay. That would be executive.
27?
20, yeah, 27. And then I, I don't know with respect to item 31, candidate update.
That is executive.
And I believe 32 would be for your discussion with Labor Council, I think.
Yes.
Okay.
On pending litigation.
For new business? I'm on an old thing.
I think 33B, non-union negotiations.
33?
Yes. Under accounting.
I don't believe so. I think that's, for the negotiation update, I, I don't know what that would, that would be within, that would be, B would be, yes.
So, just 32B and not 32? 33, okay.
Just 33B.
Okay. All right. Floor is yours. Bear with me for one minute.
Actually, 30, 34 could be non-union negotiations.
Okay, yeah, 34, yeah, okay. 35?
35 is, I, I don't know what that is. Communication, discussion.
Okay. Go through it and then I'll come back to it.
Okay.
All right. A little pressure. The communication with the other board members. That'll come back. All right. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Item 25 is the Leo Street issue. It was on the last town council agenda, and, you know, we, I had explained to the board their situation and their rights, and then the board was going to determine, I think, whether to do anything, or just table it, or take it off the agenda completely.
Well, since it's on the agenda, and we're not taking, I'll entertain a motion to take no action on Leo Street.
Do we need a motion for that, or do we have to just?
Just because they were, they were asked, they asked us to do it.
Someone, what do you make a motion for?
To make, to take no action on Leo, to have it not developed.
Right, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So that Leo Street will remain as it is. Okay.
Item 28 is the National Grid easement proposal. This is the easement, National Grid and the school department were, we were going back and forth on before the last town meeting to put electric service, I think, to Maple Shades, a line they wanted to put in. They've submitted a new easement. I spoke with Bruce Finney, the facilities manager, this morning, whether he had read the easement, whether he had any problems with it. He indicated he was fine with the easement, and I asked whether the school department was, was all right with terms of the easement. He said that the superintendent had reviewed it, and that he had no problems with it, so I don't think there's an issue with it. It needs to go to town meeting for approval, so it would be a warrant article for the special town meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, a follow-up question, council?
With that, thank you, with respect to that warrant article, would be the responsibility of National Grid to submit that in that form? How do we?
I think, I think I would leave it to DPW and National Grid to work out what they want to do, to put it in, and then give it to me to review, or if they want me to do it, they can just tell me that, and I'll do it.
Okay.
Or protocol they wish to follow, or do whatever they want.
One follow-up beyond that. With, with that as well, then, when you're saying DPW, would you recommend then that that be the board to submit that warrant article, rather than the Board of Selectment?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Item 29 was an item that was on your last agenda, submitted by the town administrator for consideration. It's just the determination of the board at some point, establish a policy for the review.
Of how, how they will be released, or the timeline of how it would be released.
How, how, how long a period does the board want to go from reviewing its executive session minutes to make the determination whether they should be released or shouldn't be released, whether the purpose of the executive session is done?
Okay, so the, so after the, the reason for the executive session no longer becomes relevant, then what period of time you want before they're released to the public? Is that what, because I think the main thing is that we don't release them because the issue is still relevant.
Right, but it, but the, the process really, under the statute and regulations, is that each board, elected or appointed, in, throughout the state, is to periodically review their executive session minutes to determine whether the purpose of those minutes has been completed. Not that there's an automatic completion, and they come out, but the boards themselves look at it and say, "Yes, this, this matter's been completed, it should come out." No, this is a matter that's never going to be completed because it's personnel, and it should, it's going to stay as executive. So it's a review. So, you know, it could be every quarter, every six months, could be every month, but I think every month is a little much, but.
Okay, let me ask you this. Because we haven't had this policy in the past, will we be required, as a board, to go all the way back to kingdom come?
Technically, it's, it's supposed to be an ongoing policy by the boards. You don't have to go back, but if the issue comes up when someone wants to review the minutes of, say, eight years ago of executive session minutes, they want a copy of those minutes, then at that point, you would, you as a board would review it and make a determination as to whether it should be released or not, or put into open session minutes.
So whenever somebody makes a request for, for the minute, for the executive session minutes, couldn't we do it on a case-by-case basis? I'm just asking.
You, it's not what the Attorney General wishes to see happen going forward.
Okay.
But I think, because of the length of time that it hasn't happened here.
Right.
These minutes, that, to do that would be an insurmountable task. You'd never get anything done for a couple of months. So it would make more sense to establish something going forward for your board, and then, as issues come up, or requests come up, to review them on a as-requested basis.
Okay.
That'd be my suggestion, anyway.
Any comments from you of mine selectmen? Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll, we'll put that in the think tank. How about that?
Works for me.
Okay. Work for you guys? All right. All right, and the military leave?
This is an opinion requested by the fire department, and submitted by labor council dealing with a employee who is, I think, an international guardsman who is on some type of active duty, and he wanted to know how many days he would be entitled to pay for. In labor council's opinion, I don't want to speak for them, but I will, because I always say that, is that because of his position with the international guard, he's entitled to 17 days in a fiscal year, and that because the fiscal year ends in September, I think it starts in October, that this particular employee would be entitled to 17 days in this fiscal year, and then the beginning of the next fiscal year, October 1, he'd be entitled to another 17.
Seventeen and 34.
So they have a total of 34 he'd be eligible for.
And if I, if I may just elaborate, that's exactly how it would work. The statute that you adopted, and then the one that's implicated by having adopted the statutory provision, is a little bit quirky. So in this particular case, the way it works out, because of that fiscal year, which runs from October through September, is there would be 17 days in the federal fiscal year, and then 17 days in the second one. The statute also, this, were to come up with somebody else, the statute actually call, says 17 days in a fiscal year, or 34 days in a state fiscal year, which runs from July through, to, through the end of June. Here, it's not going to make a difference. If this case came, it'll really be 17 and 17. But if this were to come up again with somebody else, or this person in a different year, the way that looks might be a little bit different. So it's just something to be aware of in the future. It's not a lockstep approach.
Okay.
If I may through the chair, we also have a police officer who's going into the service, and he's not coming back till May of 2015.
Right.
A little bit different.
Okay.
A little bit different, because there you have a, my understanding is it's not a reservist.
Right.
You're talking about an active service member. And so there, it's USARA that applies, and USARA.
What is SARA, please?
Oh, USARA is a federal law.
Okay.
Uniformed Service Employees.
Okay, that's right. I'll Google it.
I can't remember all the names, all the letters. But under that particular statute, paid leave isn't guaranteed, and under the state laws that have been adopted, there's no paid provision. It's not a reservist. However, it needs to be treated consistently with other long-term leaves of absences that you would have. So certain benefits would continue to accrue while he was on a leave, this individual was on a leave of absence, or any individual who'd be deployed under a USARA leave. Any contractual benefits to military leave, which there appear to be none under any applicable labor agreements, would apply. And then, and then you really have to look at how you treat other leave policies for certain other types of benefits.
So right now, we don't have a policy, and so we need to establish one, is that?
No, USARA's federal law. You just have to follow it. You have collective bargaining agreements to follow, and ultimately, I think it's, if there's a question about a, a certain benefit entitlement, the, the issue will be one that'll, you sort of have to look at the contract, the labor, or labor agreement, look at practice, or any policies that might exist already in this, in the town, to determine whether a particular benefit applies. With health insurance, usually with USARA, a USARA cover leave, if it's a long-term deployment, COBR potentially kicks in, but people usually also get, sometimes they choose not to go on COBR because they get military coverage, but that's their choice. So.
Is there anything else we should know about USARA? Is there a certain time when people need to apply for that, to have that?
There are certain notice requirements that are sort of triggered. That wasn't really what I was asked for purposes of the memo, but we could talk. Typically, people need to provide reasonable notice. Oftentimes, it's their deployment papers.
Okay.
Now, there are some times when people are called to service, and they really can't give notice, and those are excused under, under USARA. But we could certainly outline that.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful for me.
And the department heads as well, and the town administrator.
Exactly. This is something totally new for me. I don't know about anybody else, but.
Yes.
You too? Okay, so we're on, okay. All right, so we'll look for that. Thank you.
Item 31 is a police candidate update. Again, in my packet, there's nothing.
That is executive.
Okay. Then it would be item 33, accounting temporary.
The one you're thinking. I'm sorry.
33A, accounting temp information. I believe that there's information of the number of potential temporary accountants for the month of September that might be available.
May I speak to that, please? I, I really would like to know the opinion of the board with regards to hiring a temp agent. I did have a conversation with Olga, as well as Diane, and wondering if, for a one-month time, if it is money best served to hire somebody for a temp for such a short period of time. So I'd like to know, Olga was kind of feeling that she could handle it, and.
What we should have done was, I suggested in the first place.
Oh, you're going to go with if, I could have, should have?
Well, yes, I am.
Okay, you don't want me to go there today?
We should, we should have.
Yeah, but we didn't.
Six months, I know.
But actually, we did ask him, and he said no.
One month.
Well, he, okay, so I'm asking, I guess the question that I'm asking right now is, do you really want to hire a temp agency for one month? Whatever is your pleasure, if you think it's what's best for the town, I'm all, I'm all for it. Anybody can weigh in?
I think we, I don't know if we discussed, or talked to Nick about it, and the whole top, subject was, did Olga and, and anyone else involved think that they could handle it for a month? Because obviously, if they could, then we wouldn't hire somebody, because we've got a couple of candidates here. We're talking, in theory, the new person will start October 1, or whatever the first workday of that time period is. We've got one, I don't know if it's a gentleman, but one person who wants to discuss it with us next week. So that means he or she wouldn't start until probably the week after, which means we're two weeks into the four weeks, which means by the time they get here, they have to leave. So it's like.
And Olga's feeling was kind of that, you know, to get used to somebody and then have another person start.
Yeah.
You gotta unlearn what that a person who was flying through, and then learn what the new person is. And, you know, Diane has, from the assessor's office, has very generously offered to assist in the areas that she's familiar with, and I would think that perhaps, between some of our other board members, we have enough talent in town just to get through on that month. I, but I really want to hear what you guys feel, if that's not what you feel the direction we should be going.
Well, myself, I'm against getting a temp.
Okay, all right, and that's my feeling.
Yeah, I'm the same way.
All right, so.
If, you know, provided Diane was nice enough to offer.
She has been.
Well, she gets a raise.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
I wish they could have said.
I'm sure now, unilateral decisions, okay. Sure.
Wait, 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 here you go. We'll just take it out of his pay. We'll have his payday.
You won't get much of a raise.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, um, negotiating, I think that's executive. The projects due September to November, I had asked for our accounting person before they left to let us know what was due in September and November. I have not received that. Did you, Nick?
Madam Chairman, who's in the part of the packet?
Oh, somebody show me.
I receive these in my packet.
Okay. The audit review is, is done by Scanlon, correct?
Correct.
Oops, can I write on you?
Mm-hmm. You can keep.
Okay. Their free cash certification. Again, Diane is willing to work with Olga on whatever piece she has with regards to that.
I think those are the only two items for.
And I see Tom's happy smiling face back there.
And Tom, oh yeah, and Tom, Tom Florence will also help, I'm sure. Put you on the spot here.
Yeah, this is, is a tough time, having a vacancy.
Yeah.
Through, you know, setting the tax rate.
Right.
You've gone a quarter, a quarter, so Diane wants, you know, to be, not to put pressure on her, it's going to be critical.
Do you agree, though, also, to hire somebody for a month?
Yeah.
That wouldn't be helpful to the town?
I, I really don't think so.
Okay.
As of, you know, what Mr. Borb and Mr. Federici say, by the time you get him in here, get him trained, get him taught.
Do you want us to save money on Joseph?
So, but I'm just saying, you know, law, because that, you know, setting the tax rate is a key thing every year.
Right.
And to have a vacancy at this time, it's, you know, it's good to have Diane step up and, and also work together and get that done.
Okay. All right, yes.
Madam Chairman?
Sure.
If I, if I could just give the board some food for thought, just as a counterbalance, and I appreciate and understand that Mr. Florence and Ms. Hildreth are far more versed in some of these financial chores and duties, but what I'd like to just point out for the board is, I did have a conversation at around 5 o'clock, I got a phone call back from a vendor whom had reported, that I'd reported on earlier in the process.
Okay.
A gentleman from the Cape area, Cape Cod area, anyway. He, he did state that, could the town put off maybe the audit if necessary to another, another time? Could the town, if necessary, put off having that free cash done to, earlier in October? That's a possibility. But he also said that, you know, that putting those things off does add to the workload and to the learning factor of the new person coming in. So it makes it a little bit more challenging for them, maybe a lot more challenging. Again, that's not my expertise. The gentleman did offer to come out here for a price.
Oh, sure.
For a, for a consultancy next week to see about these particular projects, not the day-to-day, but to see what, to see what, if anything, absolutely must be done and it, and could be done, that might be beyond the level, and no disparaging the assistant town accountant. She's excellent in what she does, but there may be higher function things that need to be attended to in a more timely fashion than post-October 1. I say to the board, to consider that, I, I do hear pretty strongly that you're against hiring somebody, but I've wanted to bring that up, that it is an option, and something that I think you should consider.
Is it something that we could consider on the eighth? I mean, excuse me.
Certainly, certainly that is to the board's pleasure, it just.
I want to know how much.
Two hundred, $250.
That's for the consultation.
For the consultation.
Yes.
I might, the one, the one issue that perhaps Ms. Bishop can, can address or talk.
And I'm looking right at her, too.
Is the impact on the tax certification, if and when the certification of the free cash is stalled any period of time, because you won't be able to set your, I believe, you won't be able to set your tax rate until the free cash is certified.
Well, I did contact another community, I contacted a finance director just to ask that question, because as I told Mrs. Thor, that I was a little bit in unfamiliar territory when it comes to free cash, but. But because our free cash has been certified at our annual town meeting, we are good to go.
Oh.
If anything else has to be certified for a, a fall meeting, if we needed to spend more money, then we would have to get certified. I was asking her if, if she was put into a position, coming into a town at the, at a, you know, kind of this late of a date, if she had to prioritize, she said that the free cash would come after getting the tax recap put together. That's another municipality, and I can't say how our municipality would go with that, but I did double-check that.
If I may, through the chair, I believe last year, the big rush to get the free cash certified was because we had some reserve fund transfers on the special, it's a town meeting, but I don't believe from what you said before that there's going to be any based on what appropriations is said.
That's correct. No reserve fund transfers is what that memo basically says.
Okay. So we won't have to worry about having free cash certified to, to make any transfers, so.
Good.
Okay. All right. Happy, happy. Okay, the next.
The only area would be number thirty, other than executive matters, would be thirty-five, the communication discussion.
Okay, thirty-four would be in open session?
No, that would be executive. That's, if you want to treat that as contract, outgoing contract negotiation.
Yeah. Okay. So with that said, at this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations because to do so in open session could be detrimental to negotiations. And. As well as pending litigation. I was going for the next one, too. All right. I need, I need moved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Selectman Gorman?
Yes.
Selectman Federici?
Yes.
Selectman Thorpe? Yes.